Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hans Klingza and I'm chairman of the Village Official Planning Board. I'll call the Village Official Planning Board meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty five to this time. Will the secretary please take a roll call to establish a quorum?
Teresa Cattell?
Here.
Ezra Holly?
Here.
Joe Testa?
Joe's not here.
That's right, and Hans Klingza. And others in attendance are Nick Warner, building inspector, Larry Pajee, village engineer, Sarah Brown, village planner, and Anthony Regirio, CHC liaison to the planning board.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve in minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty one.
So moved.
Question and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Next item on the agenda is T-Mobile, ten oh four Main Street for sign approval. The applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record.
We need your C four, we need your sign, so there's any. This very spot now, we're facing a sign and I believe in your drawing will sign that exists up in the right corner. And when we sign, we're also using any follow the T-Mobile on the tagline to write, and then start for each. And then we have sample.
So it's just the one sign, correct?
Yeah.
Nick? Is this previously an authorized retailer or is it becoming one now? You know?
Um, I don't know. I know they're there now.
Okay, I was just asking because it's going from the T-Mobile branded sign to now an authorized retailer and I just was wondering if that's why it's going from a corporate store to a retailer store. It conforms to the code in terms of size. Obviously, it's in the historic district, so we'd like them to be more conforming to the regulations, but again, it is a national corporation, so it is within the standard and it does fit the requirements, so like for like here.
Okay.
Teresa, comment?
So it's less pink. I like that. What about the pylon sign? Is that going to change?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
Ezra, did you see this?
Yeah, looks great.
No, I'm good.
Ezra, do you have any?
No, I'm good.
Nick, are you, uh, all right? And there she's okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the sign for T-Mobile at ten oh four Main Street as per application.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Home Smart. Simplis, complex. Ten seventy-two Main Street for sign. Applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hmm? Here.
No? I'll see if they show up later. Next item on the agenda is one oh one Mobility. Seven thirty-eight Route nine, sign approval. The applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Seven thirty-one Mobility. One oh one Mobility. Official plan.
And what is? Okay.
Just for the board's knowledge, one oh one Mobility is a provider of medical implements. They are going into a, the former Radio Shack space. So they are not required to come before the planning board for a site plan review for the change of use because it is not a change of use. But they are required to come in for the sign. I did speak with the contractor and the operator of the plaza, Mr. Libsion. And they are going to also, in this process, paint that background behind the one oh one mobility, so that'll be painted white and cleaned up behind the sign as well. The sign does conform to the code and the district regulation, sign District three where this is located.
Okay. Teresa, comments?
No. I'm good.
Yeah, well, those are going to stay behind there, clean it up. That's perfect.
Absolutely. Yeah, we spoke about that with Joe Cutie, the painter yesterday.
Oh, cool. All right. All right. I'm good.
Well, it gets dirty behind there, doesn't it?
Okay, the sign does comply. It does. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the sign for one oh one Mobility at seven thirty-eight Route nine as per application.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Okay. Welcome to the Village of Fishkill.
Have a good night.
Okay, has Home Smart showed up yet? No? Okay, I want to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. For, and, and Jessica Latin Cuisine, one oh four Main Street, Suites one and two.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a public hearing is now open. Would the applicant please come forward and tell the public what's happening?
David, my name is, I represent Laura Faro, who is in the honor of the Latin restaurant that is located in one of the four market malls. We have provided the village with all the information during our process. Actually, upon the targeting study of for a four-day period over at the Market Square, and we determined that during the hours of operation we determined that there was a kind of parking which would be able to provide parking for the restaurant. As you know, Laura has, you know, one located in the Market Ball. She wants to expand her restaurant into Suite two, which is actually formerly hipster, so we wanted to be able to do that. Obviously, we would have to parent it, so that's the reason why we're here. We have also provided documentation as far as the comments that we had from Chris Rikati concerning the grease trap. We had announced that T-Mobile is located within the interior of the restaurant. We also have provided to the planning board a letter from the owner of the plaza, which early states that the grease trap located behind the restaurant, which actually serves Suite one and Suite two. I hope that everyone has a copy of that there. The other thing is that we also have the order due with a floor plan, which actually indicates some more seats, which, um, it's, um, intense to have at the restaurant. So having said that, um, we are now to the point when we, you know, we have a public hearing. The green cards have been sent out. As a matter of fact, the seating I have provided, David, with the, we spent the season, requested that we had those on file. And we look forward to having most of the seating, but already have them done last time.
I want to clear one thing up. You said in your presentation, I can use the variance. You?
Sorry, I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But you said a variance, I said, wait a minute. No, I didn't think so. Okay.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Sarah?
Uh, we did not have any outstanding comments, uh, on this application.
Larry?
It looks like all of our comments have, um, have pretty much been addressed, except for the fact that we would like them. The response is noted on the plan, just add a couple of notes. Um, the information relative to the grease trap was acceptable. Um, the uh, the statement that was previously made that there's not going to be any modifications to the plumbing, is that, that's correct, right? There's no modifications? So, so nothing's changing with the already installed grease traps. We've got no comments. As long as there's no plumbing modification, that's how we size the grease trap, sizes of pipes and different things like that, so. As long as that's not changing, everything's fine. We just ask that that be noted on the site plan. It's clearly, our request is clearly noted on our uh, comment letter, so we can use that as a checklist. I'll give you a copy of that. Okay? So we're in good state.
Yes. Nick, do you have any comments?
Uh, no comments. Just would ask that with respect to the exterior grease trap, um, once that is identified and put onto the site plan, uh, just that we schedule an appointment for Paul or someone from the sewer department just to come out and do a site visit. Check it, make sure it's been cleaned and make sure we stay on top of that and have that. If it's a thousand gallons, it should be cleaned probably at least once a year, based on your usage there, so.
Location, grease trap, that's in painted mark, so that Paul can find out exactly where it is.
Perfect. And if you could just produce something when the last time the no, just when the last time the cleaning was done on that? Okay. Yeah, just a printout from whatever company we used. Okay. Okay, if you could just ask them, we would like a copy for the sewer department's records. It's just helpful to have. If you me. This is the landlord. Okay, do me a favor. If you give me the landlord's contact information, I'll get the invoice from him. Thanks. No problem, though. Thank you.
Again, any questions, comments from the audience?
I have, uh, my neighbor is out of town this week and she asked me to convey a message. She got the notice in the mail and she was wondering what it was. It's Lisa Terracone at seven Harry Avenue. And she's fine. She didn't know what it was for, and I told her what you were doing, expanding it, and she's fine with that. She said your food is very good, and she's happy about that. So that's the only comment I've gotten from the public.
We haven't, did we get any written comments at all? Okay. Third call. Anybody from the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move.
Second.
Have a motion and second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carry.
Nice.
Teresa, have any comments?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm good.
Back to you, Sarah.
Okay. Um, I did prepare a draft resolution, um, for your consideration. Whereas the Village of Fishkill Planning Board has received application from Laura Faro uh, for the conversion of the existing retail space to a restaurant use. Uh, the application proposes the expansion of the existing restaurant into the adjacent suite that was previously used for retail. Whereas this is a type-two action pursuant to SECPRA. And the Village Planning Board held the public hearing on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, whereas it's, as part of other applications for tenant spaces within this property, the planning board has determined that the site uh, is adequate with a hundred and twenty parking spaces. Whereas in review of the current application, the planning board has reaffirmed the parking on the site is adequate. Now therefore be it resolved, uh, that the planning board affirms the parking on the site. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval to the project as shown and described on the application material, subject to compliance with the following conditions. One, compliance with the comments in the Village of Fishkill Consulting Engineers memorandum dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to the satisfaction of the meeting here. And in accordance with uh, section one seventy-one fifty-one, all fees consultation costs should be paid to the village. The rest of the conditions are the standard conditions about expiration of the site plan approval. And if there's any future modifications to the site, they have to come back to the planning board.
Okay, good. Comments?
No.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the resolution for one ten oh four Main Street, Tradiciones. Post, Latin Cuisine.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Second.
Motion second and four. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Welcome to the Village of Fishkill.
Again.
Again.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
You're welcome. Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Happy, Happy Foot Relax. Uh, seven thirty-eight Route nine, Suite C one. Site plan approval and sign approval. The applicant, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Um, my name is Dong Jiejiang. Uh, I'm the representative for Mr. Peter for his, um, uh, Happy Foot Spa Relaxology. Uh, located at seven three eight Route nine, Fish Hills, New York, one two five two four, which is in the plaza. Uh, the existing space now is an empty retail store. We try to use this, the space, uh, become to a food spa, uh, space. Uh, we, now we have the whole set construction plan. Um, according to that, uh, the existing storefront, we will keep it, no touch. And this, uh, we will give the existing entrance going to the face. And, uh, although, uh, we have, uh, all the partitions showing on the plan, there are only two types of, of the wall. Uh, number one, which is going to, uh, to full height ceiling to separate the space. And the number two, a type-two walls, which is now two, two, it is now full height wall. Um, and then no doors. Uh, uh, those rooms are for body massage. And, uh, so in the front of the space mostly is a very open space. And, uh, when people go in back, uh, we have a, before on our existing uh, demo plan, we have a, a restroom. Um, we will keep the restroom, but may, uh, but we may enlarge the bathroom to make sure it's a legally ADA bathroom. And then we also add another smaller bathroom for, uh, for us to, to use. And also we have a two full height enclosed room, which is for, uh, our laundry room and also for our storage. And, uh, at very deep end of the back, which is, uh, the room is utility room, uh, we have existing electrical panel in that room. And also we will install a new electrical hot water tank for our to use in that room. And also that room will be used for our staff. Uh, and there is a back door to the bath also, is, which is the second embrace in this, of, uh, space. So that's all. And in that, in the whole set plan, we have, uh, the, uh, existing demo plan and a new floor plan, and also the details for ADA. And, uh, electrical wiring plans, uh, according to our, both the plan. Also, we have a, uh, sprinkler plan, uh, and the diagonal plan. Basically.
All right.
Um, I only had a, a minor comment and uh, we just need the signature blocks on the, uh, site plan for the chairman to sign upon approval. Um, and then we also had a comment about the existing parking, so just similar to the last application. Um, when we get these tenant swapouts in shopping plazas, uh, what we've been doing is just confirming that there's enough existing parking there for what they need. Um, by code, they're required to have eleven spaces, so Nick Warner and I have had a conversation and he's actually gone out to confirm that there is adequate parking available um, in the plaza. Um, we looked at some aerial photography. It looks like there is, there's adequate space. Nick has also confirmed it in the field, so there's nothing further that needs to be done with that, um, comment. That's all that I have.
Engineering? We've just got our, um, two very basic standard comments for these refits, just to make sure that the site plan includes, um, the required information on the plans and that the, um, applicant submit, uh, information relative to any changes in water and sewer demand and that there's appropriate backflow prevention in the, in the building. So, you know, these are kind of uh, boilerplate comments that we have for when anybody goes in there, especially with like a spa use, we want to make sure that the other, uh, tenants and the water supply is protected with a backflow preventer. And if you have any significant changes in use, we would want to make sure that the plumbing will accommodate it, so. Um, it's probably something that the engineer will just kind of take a look at and provide a written response to, and we should be good with that. Okay? Do you have any questions? They, they can contact us. Okay? And I'll give you a copy of this, this letter too.
Nick? Uh, no further comments, and I believe, uh, Mr. Chairman, they're going to also have with them tonight a submission for a sign, so we will probably discuss that as well. So no, no further comments. I concur with Sarah and Larry on these.
Sarah, no, no public hearing is necessary on this, right?
No, um, as we've done with other very minor applications like this, we have waived the public hearing in the past.
Teresa?
Did you, I didn't hear what you said. Did you say that the, um, walls, like are walls around all the, the massage rooms? Are those to the ceiling?
No.
They won't be? Okay. Just the ones at the break rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Lines will have.
Okay. That's it. I just was curious.
I'm good.
You're good?
Backflow preventer. Right?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Come out tonight at one point.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, that's our comment number two. Yes.
Sarah, do you have a memo on this or?
I, I have a draft resolution if the board would like to entertain it.
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Okay. We have to approve the site plan first.
Yes, we'll do the site plan first and then you can do this.
Right.
Uh, whereas the Village of Fishkill Planning Board has received application from Happy Foot Relaxation Spa on behalf of Fishkill Plaza Partners, the owners for the site plan approval of a conversion of the existing tenant space to a professional service use on the parcel identified as six one five six twenty eight nine nine one three one, located at seven thirty-one Route nine. Whereas the application is a type-two action and requires no further processing under SECPRA. Whereas, uh, it has been affirmed that the parking on the site is sufficient for the proposed use based on the operational characteristics. Uh, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grant site plan approval to the project, uh, subject to the following conditions. Compliance with the comments in the Village Engineers memorandum dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Compliance with the comments in the Village of Fishkill Planning Consultants memorandum, memorandum dated fifteen, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And that, uh, in accordance with section one seventy-one, one fifty-eight, the applicant is responsible for payment of all professional consultation fees. The rest of the, uh, conditions similar to the last application are just the standard conditions that go in.
Comments? Oh? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the site plan and the resolution for Happy Foot Relax at seven thirty-eight Route nine, Suite C one as per application.
Second.
A motion second and four. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Now we'll move on to the sign.
Here.
Nick?
Sign conforms to the code. Uh, we have not had a discussion about it, but I am sure since the applicants are going to be, uh, cleaning things up, we would just ask and, and state for the record, we'd like that, uh, background painted as well there, the touch up on the face. Um, David can maybe get Joe out there while he's doing the other one and do them both at the same time, please? Yep, so if we could just get that background painted there, uh, for a refresh as well, that would be helpful. But otherwise, it conforms, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm still good.
You like the tone?
Harsh, but you know, up to you guys. Right, it's very in green, the relaxed, relaxing color.
Green is more relaxing, yes.
But I'm fine.
I'm good.
Okay. Sign combined from points. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the sign for Happy Foot Relax at seven thirty-eight Route nine, Suite C one as per application.
A motion second and a four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carry. Welcome to the Village of Fishkill. Uh, next item on the agenda is a memo from the village board uh, for, for sign procedures for a new local law the village board is looking into. Uh, Nick, you want to fill the, fill us in on?
Yes. If you recall, at our last meeting, I discussed the fact that we were talking with the village attorney and the village board about the sign district regulations in District two and District three, so basically where we were approving, uh, these signs for tonight, uh, everything outside of the Main Street Historic District. Uh, and then, uh, asking the village board to consider a local law that would modify the existing local law so that those signs could be approved, uh, by the building department and not require submission to the planning board unless they were part of a new application uh, for a site plan, uh, to the planning board. So if it was a modification to a sign, uh, for instance, like when the hotels change, um, or in the case of the plaza this evening, um, those would come to my office. We would review them, uh, to make sure they conform to the standards. Uh, and if they do, then we would issue, uh, the appropriate permits and approve them. Obviously, if they did not, uh, the applicant could conform to the standard or then be forwarded to the ZBA uh, for their review and approval or denial. Um, so that is what this, uh, memo references. There is a proposed local law that is now in front of the, uh, village board and they're uh, basically asking for your input. Um, we gave them an informal uh, response based on what we had talked about last time, but I think they'd like just a formal statement or position from the planning board as to how you feel about, uh, kind of giving that power to the building department at this point.
Teresa?
Would they require to submit samples still and have them on record?
To the building department, yes. They still would be required. Same procedures.
That's just for outside of the store district?
Correct. It'd be good for two and three.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Good.
Okay, so, uh, send the memo to the village board for the next meeting.
For Monday night.
Monday night? Okay. Nick, I want to, want to fill us in on the
Want to jump back to this one, Mr. Chairman. I, I did speak with this applicant when he initially submitted. I'm not sure. Maybe he wasn't aware of the requirement or the need to come, or maybe he had an emergency that came up. I will say it does conform to the district regulations. The sign he is proposing, um, is actually in historic color. It's a charcoal slate color, um, what he is proposing to do. Uh, in addition, he also is, is asking to paint the door uh, of the building down the street at ten seventy-two. Um, a Benjamin Moore Historic Heritage Red uh, as opposed to, uh, the dark blue color that it is now. Uh, he purchased this building recently and is kind of trying to make it like a real estate center. There's an appraisal company in there now and I believe there's a title company and I want to say there's a real estate attorney in there also. Um, so he's just trying to put some proper signage on the building because folks don't really know what's going on there. So rather than having a bunch of individual signs, he wants to kind of just have these three and then the monument sign, um, that's existing, uh, will have some sign, uh, some names on that as well. So that's what he submitted to us.
That's basically right across the street, right?
Correct. I think we can see it if we lean out far enough.
Teresa, what do you think?
Um, we don't have samples.
Here's a sample. He actually gave you.
That's it?
Yeah.
It's white.
It's white.
We, we, we should start carrying. I thought we had one upstairs, the Benjamin Moore Historic Palace.
So the three different signs for the building, well, they mat, they're twenty-four point six square feet?
Correct.
And that's.
Twenty-five is the, is the standard, yeah, is the code.
Oh, it's fine. Yep.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We accept it even though they're not here?
Huh?
Except that even though they're not.
Uh, we haven't in the past, but.
Yeah, I don't know. You, you're chairman.
Considering we might not have a meeting in June, I would put him off till July.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it. You? Yeah.
Okay. We can make an exception considering the building inspector will. Be on top of it, I'm sure. Of course. I'll entertain a motion then.
Move to accept the sign in absent. Yeah, uh, for Home Smart at ten seventy-two Main Street, as long as it matches everything according in the building inspector will. Be our eyes and ears.
We, we, yeah, we, I mean, we have to issue him a permit and a C of C. So.
Okay.
Again, you know, if it does not conform, he will.
Have to come back.
Be in violation, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carried.
Great.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we had one item that, um. Was submitted not timely, um, I guess. For whatever purpose or confusion. Um, this is related to a request, um. And I apologize for not pronouncing Dino's last name correctly. Okay, okay. Uh, ten sixty-eight Main Street, um. The applicant has asked to come before us for a certificate of appropriateness. To remove approximately twenty-five feet by fourteen feet of grass and replace it with pavers. And in addition to that. Uh, install two bistro tables with a Rosetta block base and granite top along with a Rosetta block wall. Is that correct, Dino? You know, um, that, so procedurally typically these get submitted about ten days before. I know there was a little confusion on your part. Um, can you explain to the planning board, because I know this is going to be their question? What is the necessity or need for this, um, in the historic district, uh, to do, take out green space? Okay. Okay. Um, are you going to operate the space for the kitchen and bath?
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a little problem with this. I could understand if this, uh. Was a eating establishment or something to that effect, uh, and you wanted outdoor seating, but, uh. Do, uh. But just sort of. Pavers, there are grass. And, uh. I can't understand for what reason, why?
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit more like this way. And I'll do a kitchen too, so. Get, I get, so I can.
So there'll be temporary setups changing?
Not really, just to, I can get, so we can. It's quite a good setup.
So where would the, where, where would this wall go?
Instead of wall.
Well, in your, in your thing, yours is a, uh, Rosetta block base and granite top along with a block wall.
I, uh. Actually, I might let's see, I'm doing that, so I never really.
Yeah, we have no samples then.
I, I, it's in our, it's in the stack of, there's a.
Yeah, no, I haven't, but I, I just don't see, I mean, you look at the description, it's going to be a granite top. And a Rosetta block wall.
They call it, they call it Rosetta block wall, but it's, it's not a wall, it's just a. The mountain.
A pedestal, and then the granite top would be the tabletop.
Yeah, exactly.
So you would have two of those.
It doesn't, it's an issue with the tables, I, 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 I.
No, I mean, I'm just trying to visualize, I mean, it, it just, it would be nice if there was a, a, a drawing, like an actual professional. Plan, you know what I mean? That we could visualize it, because I understand what you're saying with the outdoor kitchen. You know, if you're going to sell that kind of stuff, but. What kind of setup is it going to be? How's it going to look? From the sidewalk and like Honda's saying. You are taking away some, some green space. So we're just trying to, it's hard to visualize this.
Yeah.
With that. You know what I'm saying? I, I'm, I'm just trying to be straightforward with you, you know?
Yes.
Does it comply to the imperv- impervious?
I mean, we have next door, it's papers also, so like, it's just gonna go right to the, my neighbor's papers and.
The papers would be similar or you match them? Is that what you?
Uh, well, the type is there.
It's all, they're all going to be the same? They're not going to be different?
As a beast, the beasts in this paper, they're the same.
They're going to match the beast's papers or are they going to be a different?
Whatever it says in the, I didn't know.
Okay.
Rosetta paint, but.
I can't understand this. You have side yards here, why can't you put your. Outdoor. To the side and leave us and rather than put it right directly in front of the, uh. The building. I mean, this is like Main Street Historic. Fishkill, I mean, you know, I just.
What, what was the prior use there, Dino, in that space? You, you know?
Years ago was a, uh.
Was a lawyer, um.
And wasn't.
Years ago was a carpet dealer, I think.
Those all kinds, I think, and they've changed a lot.
They want to put in down here. My question still, isn't there a rule on how much impervious? Coverage can be on a site. Percentage wise? There are false neighbors. Yeah, um, this would be.
Well, there's still is going to be seventy-five percent of green on there, so I. In the middle, I have a, you know, the, the, the half to go in, in the road and. Hopefully the other side is going to be green and that's, we've gotten just a half of that. We are covering the sign and what's happening there.
Let me just look at the personal viewer.
Sarah, what did you say?
Eighty percent VCBD.
To be pervious.
Uh, yeah, so it's a maximum lot coverage permitted.
Oh. And we, we don't have that here. I mean, we don't know what it is because there's no calculations. Okay. So. I'm not comfortable telling you what's on this.
I mean, uh, I'm comfortable with the whole thing itself. I mean, you know, I mean, if, if it was an eating establishment and you had some. Wanted some outdoor seating or something to that effect, like the ice cream place did and of course these. Next to that, I could understand that, but, uh. An appliance. Indoor, outdoor appliance.
I have nothing to display in there, lines. They sell. That's all. They sell that, the showcase on site.
Well, I, I, like I said, you know, you, you, you have side yardage here, you could put. On the, the, the distance from the side of your, this building to the beast building there, here's already, uh. Some pavers there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's going to connect with the, with the beast. Only that side of the beast side.
No, what I'm saying is, there's, there's, there's pavers there, but there's grass all around it. So I mean, if you wanted to put the, an out, an outdoor, something like that, that we could go on the side of the.
You're saying here. Yeah, so here.
Oh, the back of there?
Well, the side. So this is the beast.
Right.
Here, instead of in the front.
Right.
But, but to our point, yeah, to the point is, there's no calculations here. So the. Regular, the, the standard is eighty percent coverage, but we won't know that because there's no calculations, what's covered. How much coverage there is on the whole property.
Property?
Yeah.
All right, that's not even, uh. It's not calculated, but the other property, the whole property is included. When I have a parking lot.
Well, there's a building on it, so it's not all green.
No, I'm talking about the last one, right?
Yeah, so the whole property, there's, I understand that, but it's not written here. We don't know what it is because it's not calculated.
I didn't even thought it was going to be a big deal to put papers.
Yeah.
Um, you guys telling me what you guys exactly want. To be done, I just want to have a little bit of visibility. I've complained for a while about that tree, the blocks completely on, uh, my place and nobody comes in. All this getting, destroying my building. And nobody comes to you to mandate the tree, so I didn't have any visibility. It's just to have a little bit of visibility up there. So I can, uh, operate the business.
Yeah, listen. I'm not in the business of trying to impede anybody making a dollar, you know what I mean? Uh, this is, this is America, but. What's up with the tree? Uh, Nick, is there anything that, I mean, that we could, I mean. Is, is, you know, do we require trimming? Is there, is there a code enforcement? Issue with that as far as?
Wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily fall under code enforcement. We have to look at the. It looks like it's between the curb and the sidewalk, so I have to send Paul out there and. See if it's a, if it's a village tree or if it's a property owner tree. So there's, there's obviously that distinction, right? Um, and a property owner always has the right, if a tree is growing into their building. To trim that tree if they come to the village and say, hey, I'm having an issue.
Right.
I'd like to cut this tree. I'm going to schedule that. I'd like a permit. Like, they can always do that, so. We don't, we don't impede them.
The owner, I bought a note thing. He said you cannot touch the tree and, uh, it's a big deal, just pay attention, don't you want to have the tree?
Who told you this?
Previous owner.
Okay, I'm the code enforcement officer for the village. I'm, I'm an official of the village. I'm telling you. You can come to the village and say, I have a problem with this tree.
Yeah, when?
Me?
In the past, right?
Um, no, actually, I spoke, yes, uh, who's Paul?
Paul, you spoke with the superintendent for Public Works for the village?
I mean, the Paul, Paul, I've always known, I spoke to him, he said, he's going to set it through to take a look, but never happened.
Okay, here's what we'll do. I will set up an appointment with Paul and Paul and I will come out and we will meet with you to discuss the tree. And we will determine if it's a, a village cost or a. Owner cost. And if, if we determine that you can make trimmings to that tree, we'll. Issue you an appropriate permit and you can go forward with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good place to start and I would think that. Like to, to Teresa's point, I mean, it's hard for us to, to. You know, we could visualize it and I understand what you're saying, but it would be nice to have a more in-depth proposal, a drawing of what he would look to do with the papers. You know what I'm saying? So maybe like. Lot size. You know, call out on there how much, you know, green space there will be even after the, the proposed. Uh, work and then just kind of give us a more of a, of a professional rendering if you have the ability to. To get that done. That would, that would help us to visualize it, you know?
Take another month, I guess, um.
I talked to, I did talk to Paul and he had said he spoke to Lee's Tree Service. And they were going to come out and, um, take a look and trim it, but he wasn't sure what exact day they were going to do that. So I'm just saying, that's what he had sent for me to do.
So, but tree and all, I mean, you know, even if it's. The tree gets trimmed back there and you got some more exposure, uh. I can't see putting. Pavers in front of this thing. To display outdoor grills.
I'm not displaying outdoor rooms, just the kitchen, the, the high kitchen, so she's a, uh, uh. It's not that, I don't want to put kitchen outdoor.
You sign? It's the pylon sign there that you, it's, it's that sign up there? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard for. It's hard for us to make a decision without any, a lot of information. For one, we, even though you're saying it's the same as what's next door, I don't know what's. I don't remember what's next door, if we have actual samples of what you're putting down. Um, I guess that's in the book, but, you know, we like to see physical samples of them and then.
Physical, uh.
Usually, like we've done with all our other applicants, so.
All right, nevermind, I'll do more with this, okay, I'll go.
Let's do this. Why don't, why don't we look at the lot coverage area? Because there is. A lot of blacktop in the back of the property. And there's a lot of sidewalks here now. So let's, let's make sure we're not exceeding the eighty percent. Um. Sarah and I want to just take a look at the use of the space on the first floor where you're going to have the showroom. And just confirm that that. Doesn't require any further approval of the planning board. Um.
I was, everything I did, uh, I was from previous inspector. So you could have more involved coming to come over.
You know, no, no. I'm not saying it wasn't approved by the previous inspector, but. From the planning board perspective. If there's a change in use, like you just saw the, the folks that came in with the foot spa, right, that. There was a different use, they still had to come in and get an approval from the planning board to change that use. It's part of our code in the village, just like when I explained.
I have no problem to do that, except I was, I asked for that and I was going to be inspected that I didn't need to do that.
Okay, I, again, we just want to make sure we're doing it all right in one piece. Are you going to do any signs on the building?
No, there is existing sign.
Just going to use that monument sign. Okay, okay. And then, and then we can.
I got that other question. Um, am I allowed to do a lettering in the window or no?
Uh, lettering in the window. So we would probably constitute that as being a sign, especially because it's in the Main Street Historic District. Okay, but I mean, i- if we're going to review everything, we might as well do it all at once. So if you want to propose something.
Okay.
Now is the time to do it, you know, we can work all the details of that out, so. Um, so any, any thoughts or ideas you have, even like, you know, I want to do this in three months, six months, let's. Let's just go through them and we'll get them all done at the same time.
Okay.
All right? Um, so I think that, that's probably the best approach for this application. The kind of, let's get it all in and. Look at it all at once, all right?
So then we'll set up an appointment.
Yeah, we'll set up, we'll set up a point, we'll sit down, we'll go through piece by piece, we'll take a look at. Kind of what's going on at the beast with pavers, we'll get some photos over there, we'll take some photos of your space. And then you can get us, you know, a calculation, we'll work together, even if you need a little help with it. To figure out, you know, total coverage of the building on, on the property there. Just to make sure that, you know, we're complying with all the regulations.
I appreciate that.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
One last thing before we adjourn, and I wish to say, happy birthday.
He's not old enough yet.
What are you, you're twenty-one, so you can have a.
Yeah, I was twenty-one. I'm meeting them next door.
All right. Okay, depending on. This. Thing here, uh, our next meeting would have been the nineteenth, which is, uh, June teeth, which is a federal holiday. So if something does come up. That we do have to make, we would either plan on the, probably the twenty-sixth, because if any plans coming in that first week. That, that wouldn't be enough time for people to review it for the twelfth. So, uh, if a meeting does occur.
So we'll say on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah. We'll, uh, contact everybody, we're meeting on twenty-sixth. Other than that, we don't meet again in July. Anybody have any comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
The motion's second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carried. Thank you all.